Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting is Thursday, January 11, 2015. At this time, I'll ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer, after which we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Board Member Ted Lamb. Mr. Lamb?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you see it. At this time, we'll be led with the mission statement, Mr. Lamb.
The mission of the portions of public schools is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamb. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Reverend Fleming, Mrs. Hines, Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Mr. Nance, Mr. Parent.
Yes, present.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Present.
Six members present.
Okay, thank you. We'll call your attention to the agenda. I'd like to make, uh, there's one correction needs to be made. Item number six, delete the word custodial. This will be a request for approval of administrative regulation for scheduled breaks. It's not pertaining directly to custodial, so delete that word. Okay? Other than that, for his pleasure.
Move for the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Rude and proper second ever doubt the agenda is given in discussion. If not, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, item number two, roll call. Request for approval or authorization for signatures in the absence of the Superintendent for Fiscal Year 2015-16. Dr. Bracy, do you have anything to add for that? I got a copy over here. I don't know if the board members got a copy or not.
It was in the drop box.
It was in the package.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, this is standard procedure for the superintendent.
Right.
If there's no discussion, for his pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Rude and proper second that we adopt the authorization for signatures. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is request for approval to adopt a resolution naming members to the other post-employment benefits OPAT Trust Committee. Uh, let me open this for discussion, because at the time, I was on, uh, on the one on that, and we didn't know it, but we have to have approval from the board for the sign, people are assigned to this. So what I did, I put Mr. Parent down, since he was the vice chair, until found out if board, unless board members wanted to, next someone else. It's myself, I'm on it, Mr. Parent, Mr. Parent's not on it yet, Dr. Bracy, Brittany, and Mr. Steele, I think, another name's on it from the administration. So I added Mr. Parent, but at board's pleasure, you can do how you want to do it to serve. You serve it in one-year terms. We used to meet once a quarter, then it was every six months, once a year. And it's really, it's to go over what to have for the investment for the school system and this other. Yeah, so, uh, that, that's why Mr. Parent's name was in there, he was the vice chair, so I just automatically just put his name there, but for his pleasure, I think Mr. Parent's like I am, he's open to whatever you all want to do. I know I am.
I move that we have Mr. Parent as the second person on there for the school board.
Well, the list, it's a list of names.
A list of names.
Yeah, the list of names on there. Right, on the resolution. Okay?
I move for the approval of the PPS OPAT Trust Committee.
Second.
It's the move to approve that we assign the names of the six for the OPAT Trust Committee in the discussion. If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
And I didn't ask, but if, if anyone wants a copy of that on the board, because they, what they do, they give them to us, and they're thick folders, and if you want to, I, I can give you mine, or they only give us something like three, or one for each one of us, they don't print enough for the whole board. But it shows you the whole action for the year, and, uh, you know, I would try to explain it to you, but it's, it's, it's reading stops, is what it comes down to, but you know, if anyone wants to see it, I can make sure you get a copy.
Yeah, I would like one.
Okay. I'll make a note for that, so we can get back to Mr. Lamb. Okay, item number four, request for approval of revised budget categorical adjustment for 2014 and 15. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, sir. Uh, for the request for the approval for the revised budget for the categorical adjustment, we've wanted to give you somewhat of, I guess, an in-depth rationale as to where we are with our spend-out plan, and it will explain specifically why we're requesting the adjustment. So if I can, Brittany, if you'll come forward at this time, so we can break this down, so that they can see exactly where we are in this. I see Ms. Brazil here today, so there may be some questions that come up that she can address as well as pertains to the MWBE.
Okay. Within the folders that you received today, there is two legal side documents. The first, this first document should be right on top. What this is, within the finance department, we weekly do estimates about availability of funds, and since we're getting closer to the year, we have a better idea of some of those smaller, one-off things that we can easier, easier estimate. So what I provided you here is, this is the most up-to-date availability estimate that we have. So I'm just gonna walk you through, so you can, um, just understand the numbers in the document that I provided. So the first page is the revenue section. What you'll see is, we break down the revenue by our major sources, and start with what we budgeted for. So this year, we budgeted for $142.5 million. Now, our budget is always an estimate. State figures change based on ADM, so we have to figure out, okay, what are we actually gonna receive in? So that's what the second column is, which shows a total of $141.9 million is what we estimate that we'll get for this total year. Now, this includes the reappropriation of the unassigned money from fiscal year 14 into this year. So if you look at the variance, you'll see that we're gonna, we're not gonna receive, we're estimating not to receive 572 grand of the budgeted revenue, and that's purely just because a budget is just an estimate. So if you move to page two, this moves into our expenditures, and since we are funded categorically, we look at it by each category. So if we start with instruction, currently, just based on where the budget stands right now, we're currently showing a estimated shortfall of a million dollars within instruction. So if you go over to the next number there, you see 1.2. This is the categorical adjustment that we are presenting to the board tonight in order to make sure that we cover this estimated shortfall. Now, based on our estimate that we previously had, we found we had an error in how we were estimating the payroll costs, so that's why we're making sure we correct this through this new categorical adjustment. So pending the approval of the categorical adjustment, we're estimating that we would have 122 grand left within instruction, which gets pretty close to spending what we anticipated for that category. If you move down to the administrative and attendance and health category, right now we're estimating $884,000 availability funds within that category. Now, because I said on the first page, we're anticipating that we're not gonna receive all the revenue we budgeted for, we have to take that into account, because when we set up the budget, it's budget of revenue equals budget expenditures. So if you look at the administrative category, you'll see in this fourth column over, there's adjustment for 100 grand. That's just me trying to take in, in account, a portion of the shortfall in revenue we'll experience. And then the other amount is being included in another category, but you'll see it in this spreadsheet. Within pupil transportation, which is on page three, at the top of page three, we are estimating right now having available 591 grand of surplus money, but again, I have to take into account that shortfall in revenue. So within that category, the fourth number over, you see an adjustment for 472 grand, and that's the remaining amount of the shortfall in revenue, which we're estimating that will leave 119 grand within the pupil transportation account that will be available. Within operation and maintenance, right now, there's a $3 million availability, but again, we have a categorical adjustment before you all tonight to take care of the estimated shortfall in instruction, and then we also have another adjustment that affects technology, so that we can do all of the projects that were on the spend plan. So after the anticipated approval of the categorical adjustment, that will leave 943 grand within the operation and maintenance account. We don't have anything budgeted for facilities, so that's all zero. Within the debt and fund transfers category, we're estimating 104 grand to be available. And then if you move to technology, and actually, if you turn to the next page where the summary numbers are, within technology, on the last page, we're anticipating right now 366 grand of additional funds, but based on the spend plan that we presented to the board, we needed additional 952 grand in order to take care of all of the IT projects. So again, that's the other piece of the categorical adjustment that's before the board tonight. Then after that adjustment, it'll be 1.3 million dollars of funds available to spend within technology. So altogether, summing all of the availability that we show right now, including the pending categorical adjustment, that will leave 2.6 million dollars available. From there, I have listed some of the other projects that are pending, and that through conversations with the city, I needed to take into account. So you'll see this additional technology projects from the spend plan. Once we're able to get the money moved into the technology category, then we can go forth with finishing the technology projects from the spend plan. So I'm taking that into account when I'm looking at the 2.6 million dollars of surplus. Additionally, through talks with the city, they have asked us to reserve money, any surplus funds, to take care of the West Haven roof and the Wilson A&amp;E project that they're unable to fund, so that essentially, whatever we have unassigned, we will transfer that back to the city, and then they'll put that into the school CIP fund. So we'll be covering those projects, but we'll transfer the money to the city in order for them to, to do that. And then also, you'll see these last two items, the paving contract and white fleet contract, these are actually the two contracts that are before the board tonight, so pending board approval, then those projects will be done, which will be a use of the 2.6. So if you, starting from the 2.6, and then subtracting all of these additional items that we need to take into account, then that leaves an estimated surplus of $611, which previously, we talked about a goal of having between 500 and 750 grand left at the end of the year, so we're estimated to be within that range. Now, we do have additional items on the spend plan that was provided to everyone, and you all have this second sheet, which gives a status update of all the plans that we originally provided, and this gives you detail, and I won't go through all of this unless you want to, but this gives you exactly where we are with the process. But what I did was, I went ahead and summarized it on this sheet, so you can see, these are the other projects within the spending plan that need to be done, but just based on logistics and what process needs to take place, may or may not make it, but the goal is, and what's been discussed with our counterparts within the city, is that whatever unassigned funding, funds we have, we would wanna request reappropriation, and list exactly what these items will be spent on, based on the spend plan that we've had in place. And you'll see that currently, our other needs, which we all know, our needs outweigh the actual funding that we have, but our goal would be to use any surplus funds to cover as much of these projects, and then make sure we take care of them with the 15, 16 budget. So to make sure that our spend plan still gets done.
Any questions? Mr. Lamb? So according, so what it looks like from, from this sheet right here, it looks like all of these items that has been either contracted out or converted to a purchase order, meaning services or being done, goods, at this point. And the 1.2 million, where are we moving, where are we moving that out of to back into instruction?
We're moving it out of operations and maintenance.
Okay. And is, is part of this funding, part of how we had passed the resolution about the 5.6 million?
Yes.
Two weeks ago, is that, is?
Yes, so two weeks ago, we moved money out of instruction, based on where the estimate was at that time, into operation and maintenance, but because we had an error in how we were estimating payroll expense, we had to say, we gotta make sure we cover this, so we need to move that money back in, so we won't have any issues.
All right. And the, the error in the payroll expense, that has been corrected?
Yes. Yes, well, this will correct it. This categorical adjustment will correct it.
Uh, Mr. Parent?
Is the, is that error because of software glitch?
No.
Or is it because the way, can you, I'm just curious, what kind of error are you talking about?
Well, we have to estimate what the rest of payroll will be for the remaining of the year.
Sure, right.
So we look at historically, what has been last year.
Right.
So when we did that, for one of the payroll periods, we forgot to take into account that that was. Healthcare comes out, and healthcare doesn't. So because we forgot to take that into account, when we looked at what actually happened, the payroll actual amount was a lot larger than what we estimated, so we had to make sure that we correct it. It's not, we had the money there to fund it, but remember, we're trying to, we're trying to estimate all the way through the end of the year.
Okay. Reverend, Mr. Lamb?
Now, I think I understand now, more so than the other time. This is why categorical funding is actually difficult, because we have to estimate everything.
Right. And you have to keep moving if?
Right. I, I see that now. I can, I clearly understand now.
And the city has indicated this, this is the last time we can provide a categorical adjustment request because of meeting the city council date prior to the end of the year.
Okay. All right, uh, so based on that, if there's no other discussion, would it be for his pleasure?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Rude and proper second that we adopt the approval for the advanced budget categorical fund, funding adjustments. Any more discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. The next item is request for approval of purchasing contracts.
I knew we're moving fast.
I'm sorry, I didn't look up.
Yeah, I did have a question before we voted, but I was, I was gonna vote for it anyway, but I did have a question as far as, I know we have the explanations here about the purchase orders at the end of the year. Will we get another updated report at our 20?
25. It is our intention to have you another updated report.
Okay. Where we actually see the purchase orders? Exactly.
Yeah, who can do that?
I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say that, because I don't know what they're gonna have a feeling.
Well, we're asking, we're the ones that ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the ones that ask.
Okay, I'll have to look over there. I have to look over there.
We can, we can provide that.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a problem.
It's just a printout office, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, number five, request for approval of purchasing contracts. Uh, who's that on?
Mr. Steele.
Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As Brittany indicated, and what was on your spreadsheet, two of the items that we're looking for approval tonight are two contracts as part of that spend plan. The first item is a, kind of a specialized truck. It's, it's really a bin roll-on, roll-off type of truck that handles taking a dumpster, filling it, and then taking it to the dump. So in this case, we only received one responsive, responsible bid, and that bid was for 77,000, which was, was considered, um, fair and reasonable. We also coordinated that with Transformation, and their feedback to us was that they also felt that there was not an available MWBE vendor that could meet the specialized requirement, and so we're recommending approval. The second item involves paving services, and this is for a number of paving requirements throughout the district that include paving, parking lots, and large areas where we have a need to fill potholes and things like that, and they're, they're prevalent throughout the district, and we'd like to, we're recommending a ward for justifying the utilization of a cooperative contract. And if you recall, the school board changed their policy before, the school board did not review cooperative contracts, but starting in January, we started presenting these to the board, and I think this is maybe the second or third one that the school board has seen. We did one for painting, and now this is one for paving. And so attached to your, um, package here is the justification form that we've developed internally to evaluate the use of the cooperative contract, but in addition, we've been working with, um, Transformation closely, because the cooperative contracts that were available, none of them had MWBE, so we were still trying to reach out to look for subcontracting opportunities and other vendors that are MWBEs, and you'll see in there a matrix of the vendors that Transformation provided us, and Tony Canyons here, our new purchasing manager, he personally contacted each of these vendors and sought out their capabilities, and you can see the responses in the right column on, on, on their ability to support. And unfortunately, we, there was not really a viable MWBE at the time that could handle the scope. Today, we had a further discussion on the results of that. We had some vendors that were reluctant to bid, and as part of our outreach activities, those are, those are things that we look at after the fact, on going back to them, on why they didn't bid, to encourage them to bid next time, to remove those obstacles. The other ones, they couldn't handle the size of scope that was being offered, although there were some smaller jobs they could. So one of the things that we talked about for future procurements is to maybe develop and present to the board a term contract that we could use to at least get MWBEs started that would, would handle a lot of the small jobs. So we don't have an MWB that's being recommended in this, but we're working with Transformation to look at how we can improve, um, getting MWBEs involved in this type of service requirement from the schools, but at this time, we're recommending approval.
All right. I'm still trying to, pardon my ignorance on this, but I'm still trying to grasp this 2015 Ford F-50. You just said a few minutes ago that this four-by-two truck is gonna be used to load and unload a disposal. I mean?
This, this truck is replacing an existing truck, and it's considered the worst truck in our utility fleet right now, and the city garage, everybody's recommending replacement, it's considered a safety issue, the hydraulics on.
What does this truck do? I guess that's what I'm asking.
What it does, it, it has hydraulics on the bed.
But what do we do with the truck?
We, we fill it with things that need to go to the dump.
Oh, just the?
And that, that's what we do with it. So if, if we're clearing out an area or whatever, any type of debris, we load it up the bin, we roll it off, fill it, roll it back onto the truck, and take it to the dump.
But this has nothing to do with, like, the contract to, I'm a threat waste management. I mean, they, they do all that. This is just a truck, and we use the truck.
Right, and it, and it's, my understanding is, it's pretty fairly utilized. We did ask the city if, instead of buying a truck, we could maybe partner to use one of their trucks, and they've indicated to us that all their trucks are fully utilized, that they couldn't, they couldn't meet our requirement.
Okay. So Dan, pardon me.
Maybe I can help you clear this up, Mr. Steele. It's like when we had several, a lot of tree debris, and we parked a container at the DAK Center, where all that debris could be put in after a storm, then that vehicle takes that debris wherever it needs to go.
I was thinking.
Does that?
Yeah, exactly. I was just thinking, services, that you'd contract that with somebody else, and we didn't do that.
No.
Now I know that we, I didn't know that.
Ms. Williams?
I was just, we'll move for the approval.
Okay. Rude and proper second that we adopt the purchasing contracts, without force any more discussion. If not, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item number seven, request, uh, I'm sorry, number six. Request for the approval of administrative regulation for scheduled breaks. I think you have the regulations before you. For his pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Do you have anything that you wanna add, Dr. Bracy, before we?
No.
Okay, no discussion?
We'll make the correction.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, next item, request for approval of a calendar revision for the 2015-16 school year. If you recall, we had this before you, before, so I didn't, if there's any discussion, no discussion, all for his pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second.
Rude and proper second that we adopt a new revised calendar for school, calendar year 2015-16. No discussion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
I think it would be nice for staff to know that now, that this year, that they're gonna have two full weeks again for the winter break, which is Christmas holidays and whatever.
I will send a staff email and post it by tomorrow on the website.
Because that was what you're, I mean, that's what we're correcting this, to give them two weeks. That's great. Thanks for doing that.
Sure.
Okay. I know, they thank you.
Item number eight, request for the approval of the special employee transaction report.
Move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Rude and proper second that we adopt the transaction report is given. Any discussion?
I thought it was, well.
Pardon?
Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Item number, review of the agenda for Thursday, June 25, 2015. Dr. Bracy, would you take us through that right quick, please?
For the agenda, we have the code of order, Mr. Bridgeford, moment of silent prayer, pledge of allegiance, Mr. Ted Lamb, school board mission statement, Mr. Lamb, attendance by electronic vote. Item one, for approval of the agenda. Item two, recognition of schools' highest attendance rate for May and June. Item three, for electronic vote, the approval of the minutes, May 7th, May 21st, special meeting, public work session. Item four, comment, knowledge and items. Item five, discussion, monthly report, clerical instruction, Dr. Nita Taylor. Item six, request for approval of the Virginia High School League membership applications for Churchland, I.C. Norcom, and Woodrow Wilson High Schools for the 2015, 16 school year. Item seven, discussion of the Code of Student Conduct Handbook for the 2015, 16 school year. Madame Sarah Sugar. Item eight, discussion of the 2015 Board Summer Retreat. Item nine, request for approval for permission to submit the annual No Child Left Behind Act of 2001, local consolidated application to the Virginia Department of Education for fiscal year 2015, 16. Item 10, monthly report, human resources, Ms. Jessica Duran. Item 11, request for the approval of the tenure list for the 2015, 16 school year, continuing contracts. Item 12, request for the approval of the 2015, 16 Pay and Classification Plan. Item three, request for the approval of the election list for the 2015, 16 school year. Item 14, request for the approval of the employee transaction report for June 2015. Item 15, monthly report, budget and planning, Mr. Steel. Item 16, request for the approval of a resolution to reimburse expenditures made by the school division in support of the SOL well-based technology initiative from funds provided by the Virginia Public School Authority Education Technology Notes. Item 17, request for the approval of the financial report for May 2015. Item 18, end of year spending update. Item 19, request for the approval to authorize the division superintendent to hire teachers and other crucial personnel through July and August 2015. Item 20, superintendent's report. Item 21, board members' comments and concerns. Item 22, adjournment. In addition to the above agenda, we will also have two student disciplinary cases and one employee grievance.
Fair? I know, Dr. Taylor, this is probably premature, but I know SOLs are over, and I know schools are checking their list, adding up and plating and making sure they got that. Will you have some kind of preliminary? I know we normally get this in August, but will we know some kind of preliminary results of where we are, where the schools?
We would probably have to give you that in closed session.
Oh, I'm sure.
We can probably have some preliminary information, but the data will be continuously updated based upon our expedited retakes.
Right, right.
And what we call the VDOE, scrubbing of the data, which is where they take out those students that don't count against us. But I'm pretty sure that we can have some pretty stable preliminary results.
I know we won't get to.
And certainly can give you specific information around the growth that we see.
Okay.
And we do want to make sure that we focus on the growth at the schools. Even in our schools that don't have accreditation, we're focusing on the celebrations that we will have around the tremendous and significant growth patterns that they're showing. So we're excited about being able to provide that information.
That's good. And my second question, I don't know who's gonna be presenting the No Child Left Behind, but always ask the question about carryover. I just want to make sure that, how much carryover we're gonna be looking at for...
For accreditation purposes?
No, what I meant, with this grant, with...
Oh, with the grant.
With the grant, how much carryover?
Okay.
Because there is a carryover budget that will go with this.
Yes.
And I just, I ask that question every year, so I just give you a heads up, and always ask the question. I know it's, most of your carryover goes to salaries and instruction, and I'm sure that's what it is. I'd just like to know what the figure is.
Right, and we are assessing our Title I grant, in the process of writing the grant for next year, which is due on the 30th.
Right.
We're gonna put that on the agenda, get approval on the 20th. It's on...
Okay.
For what? The other No Child Left Behind? Oh, I guess we, I got it. We definitely will have that update for you.
Good, thanks.
Okay.
I just had a question for clarification about the agenda being published in the current.
Oh, okay.
Has it just been, it's published for the regular meeting?
No.
Because it wasn't in there for this one?
It's in there.
It is, yes.
It was on Sundays?
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't find it either.
I couldn't find it.
I've got it on my desk upstairs.
Did you?
No, I don't think it was in the...
I would say it's in there.
I thought maybe it was just for the regular meeting, where all of them were in there.
It's on my desk downstairs. I have it.
Yeah, I don't need to read that paper. Okay, board member reports? Do we have any reports from board members? We have no reports?
Can I ask, as it relates to report, well, what we hear at graduation, as it relates to the number of honor students per school and scholarships, can that be placed on the website? Can that be highlighted? I think that they need to hear the report coming from Dr. Taylor after graduation, and it also needs to be written out, just like we hear it at the graduation. It kind of needs to be a highlight of each school, how many honor grads came out of that school this past school year, as well as the amount of money for scholarships. I think that that is very needed as it relates to the schools.
Absolutely, and we can work with the media, because the newspaper typically publishes that.
Right, well, and Mr. Wiggins has already sent that information to the schools, so we expect that next week, I think Monday, I think is... So it can be placed on our website? Yes. Okay. And it will be highlighted in our next meeting by Dr. Taylor?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Nance?
We asked the folks from Transformation if they've got any reports on end of year spending. Do you have anything?
We are on target to meet the MWBE goals and to fill the requests that we had before, the two that we'll fill tonight. While we agreed that there was not a qualified and ready, available MWBE to work on those projects, it does take us to the next level of finding out what else we have to do. But we anticipate that by your next meeting on the 25th, we'd be able to give you a very solid update, and most of this will be ready to be out in public, and certainly by the end of the year. Gym lockers is the only one that we still have to do a little bit more work on. We will send you money.
All right. Go ahead, Frank.
I've got my...
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
Oh, I like Reverend Fleming's idea about the website, but I wondered if we could summarize this and buy an ad in the paper, because, you know, a lot of people don't necessarily go to the website, and this is something that we really need to focus and let people know. So I think if we could summarize it and buy an ad in the paper in the current.
And do both.
I mean, absolutely do both, but I mean, take it a step further and put it in...
I was gonna ask him to check with Mr. Wiggins, but that's normally what we do once a year anyway, so I was gonna ask him to check to find out what's gonna be done this year.
Same thing. Yeah, that's done, that will be done. Yeah, Mr. Wiggins has already...
Because if we don't tell our story...
Right.
It's been done previously.
He shared with me that we do that.
This really illustrates the importance of a communications person, that we need to bring on board, and like I said previously, takes some weight off of superintendent, secretary, and others who are having to basically do that job. Thank you.
Okay, this is not a report, this is a request, reminder to board members, please, by the 25th, if you have any subject matter that you would like to have addressed for the retreat, please get it into Kathy or myself and try to be specific, so if you're not specific, one of us is gonna call you, find out exactly what you mean, and make sure we're not repeating. Because what I would like to do is by the end of this month, is get an agenda out, so you'll know what the superintendent's thinking, but, well, that's gonna be the final agenda. But I want your input, because this comes from the superintendent, whatever he has with his administrative staff at his upper level, and plus us. Okay, so please, by the 25th, if you'll get that to me, I'd appreciate it. Okay, closed session, closed meeting. Mrs. Hines is requested, and we're gonna get Mrs. Hines to join us for closed meeting for, what we got?
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: consideration of personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 2.1.
Second.
Moving to the second that we go to closed meeting and discussion. If not, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
I thought I hit it.
Mr. Parent?
I said yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bridgeford?
Yes, and I'm gonna get Mrs. Hines on there, so she can say yes, okay? Give me a minute.
Okay.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes, sir.
If you would say yes, you would be added to the closed meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Hines is in closed meeting. We're going into closed meeting, Mrs. Hines, so I've got you on the speaker, okay?
Okay.
All right, if you'll close the door, we're ready to go.
Close the meeting.
Second.
Moving to the second that we come out of closed meeting and any discussion?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.